Good evening, everyone. Sorry for our delay here. We like meetings just prior to this. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And once we're done with the pledge, if we could just stand for a moment longer in honor of Jim Day, who passed away last week suddenly. Jim was our teacher, former athletic director, and coach, and touched a lot of folks here in town, so.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight, we have some special recognition. We have some Berlin Bravos. Turn it over to Brian. Yes, if I could have intern principal Barbara Ventura, assistant principal Kelly Mayo, fall forward to share the Berlin High School Bravo with us. And Jeff, is Jeff there? Assistant principal Jeff Price, thank you. Sorry. And Jamie Miller, could you join us?
Could we have Hannah Smolits up here, please? If you have center stage. Well, welcome. This is Hannah Smolits, and she is one of VHS's Berlin Bravos for this month. And it is with great pleasure that I am giving Hannah this award. She has been a student participating in business classes since her freshman year. For the past two years, she's been an active and vital member of the VHS DECA chapter. She currently serves as the DECA Director of Operations. This young lady is very motivated and driven for her path in business. Through her time in the club, she has organized ways to meet. Meetings are conducted, determined to motivate students to participate, and has assisted in creating an overall club membership. So specifically for her accomplishments, she has placed within the top 20 at the DECA International Career Development Conference for her advertising campaign. Along with her fellow officers, she's reached out to over 350 local businesses to develop relationships that will benefit our program. She developed numerous fundraising ideas. She has developed new spirit wear for our school store. She's in the process of applying to be a candidate for the position of President for the State DECA Chapter, which serves over 2,400 members. And she's been instrumental in working with me, and Mrs. Pyris, and Mr. Kronk, Mrs. Mayo, in developing an internship program. With the budget the way it is right now, we don't have anybody to coordinate an internship. And as soon as Hannah heard the word "internship," she said, "That's for me." She came to me, she had a proposal written, presented it, "This is what I want to do." So we will be probably starting next week with two internships that really she has done all the legwork on. And it is with great pleasure. Hannah Smolits for the Berlin Bravo. And for our second recipient tonight, Nathan Spencer, please. It is with great pleasure that we nominate Nathan Spencer with the Berlin Bravo Award. Nathan is a sincere and hard-working young man. His desire to succeed drives his achievement. Over the past two years, Nate has learned how to self-advocate, accept responsibility for his choices, and most importantly, learn from those choices. And it's been a process. Nate has had to acknowledge his strengths and weaknesses, and has through this process arrived to the realization that change can only come from me. When teachers were asked to describe Nate, very quickly, real quick, they were able to respond with, "He is kind, he is helpful, pleasant, respectful, he works well with others, and he has a strong love of his family." He has been wonderful with his grandparents, his pets, and most especially, the respect and admiration he has for his parents and siblings. Nate strives to make the honor roll. He self-advocates and will often stay after class to further discuss his learning. He wants to do well so he can attend college and possibly join the military as a medic. It's with great pleasure, we recognize Nathan.
Congratulations to both the high school students. Next up. Next, we could have the McGee Administrative Team, Mr. Salvadorso, assistant principal Heather Gitch, and assistant principal Tim Shebrini. And then we could have Dr. Carey Sassoon Martin, representing the board. First of all, congratulations to Hannah and Nathan. We'd like to say that we had a little part of their success at the beginning. Also, before we get started, if you look at the artwork in the back, that this display this month was by students at McGee, is that correct? Those are ours. Yes. So if you get a chance at some point, take a look at those. So our first Bravos winner is Kaylee DeMayo. We'll have Kaylee come on up. So Kaylee is a very tall member of 7 feet. She's here with her sister Taylor, who's a grade five student at Griswold School, and also her grandparents. There are a host of her teachers that are here, to those teachers that nominated, and coaches as well, that really have a lot to say good things about Kaylee. So Mrs. Zibrans is here, Ms. Cooper, Ms. Bazelli. Mrs. Felix is on her way. She just texted me that she went to Berlin High School, so she gets credit for this even though she didn't. I believe Mrs. Labadia is in here as well, and then also Mrs. Zagorski. So you see all the people that are really happy to be here and proud of them. So Kaylee's a member of the basketball team. Do you want to take a guess as to what position she plays? She's a center, and she is also on the softball team as well. She was nominated by her teachers for her commitment to excellence, always striving to do the right things. She keeps a positive attitude no matter what. She's always there to help or listen to a classmate who needs it. Her selflessness and upbeat attitude make her an inspiration to the team. This will certainly serve her well as she aspires to become a doctor. We are very proud of Kaylee and congratulate her on this well-deserved Bravo. We're going to call on Ashley Rush. So Ashley's here with her twin brother Ethan, her mom, and two great aunts. Some of her teachers are here as well, Mr. Cormac, Mrs. Labadia, and Mrs. Zagorski, thank you for coming. Ashley is also not great at art, not great, oh, she's a great girl at school, but she's also a dancer. She's been dancing since she's been three years old, and she's currently studying jazz and ballet, and she said at the end of this, she was going to do a split, so. So she was nominated by her team, and she approaches her studies with enthusiasm and determination. She asks appropriate questions when needed, but will also choose challenges when she's ready to do that in the classroom. Her team describes her as an organizational wonder who will help her classmates. We can use her as a consultant if you want to come by, we can make you a few bucks. She always finds the good in her friends and her peers. She's the kind of friend you would want your son or daughter to be. These aspects will serve her well as she aspires to follow in her mom's footsteps as a school psychologist. Where's mom? There she is, okay, I'm going to make it. We're very proud of Ashley and congratulate her on this Berlin Bravo. And Mrs. Felix made it, all the way to the Capitol. She might have a ticket or two on her car, but she even made it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody. At this point, we will take a five-minute break so that the board can talk with the students if they'd like. There's cookies in the corner, and it also gives you the opportunity to escape the rest of our meeting, if you so choose. We would love to have you for the rest of the night, but we understand that maybe this is not at the top of your list. So about five minutes, we'll go from there. We all set to come in fast? Next up on our agenda, we have a student presentation from Berlin High School. So first and foremost, I want to talk about the Berlin High School music. Not yet, not yet. Not yet.
Well, good evening again. One of the highlights we had at VHS Level 1 was our Truth About Hate program on January 24th in concert with the Internet Defamation League, Mrs. Mayo, Anna Nascimento, one of our counselors, Mrs. Portal, these are members of our Unity Team, led by Brianna. For the most part, they created a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for staff and students to work together, which she's going to talk about. This opportunity provided students with information on the origins of hate, a deeper understanding of stereotyping, jokes, name-calling, and rumors that are all seeds that can turn into prejudice and discrimination and hate. And Brianna is going to give us her point of view because she did so much work on it, and they did a wonderful, wonderful job on the presentation.
Hi, everyone. So for Unity Team at our school, our goal is to promote anti-bullying. And whether you see bullying, you hear it, or you just don't know that it's there at all, it is present in all schools. So the goal of our club is to just spread positivity and promote people to stop bullying and step up for people when they do see someone in that situation. So on January 24th, we had a half-day, and we had an assembly all day about anti-bullying. So there is a video at another school. It really recaps everything about ADL and how the students are impacted after the presentation, so I'm just going to show you it. It's about five minutes long, so bear with me.
I felt shocked when I was first bullied. It never really occurred to me that someone could be that hostile and that mean, and it hurt so much in the inside. It felt like something was tearing at my own very being.
When I was first bullied, I was beyond upset. I thought everyone hated me, that no one liked me.
I think that bullying today is probably more common than it was years ago, just because it's so easy with texting, and the internet, and social media, all of that, there's more avenues for it.
Because you can say anything you want to someone behind a screen or behind your phone. It doesn't really take any guts or any aggression, anger, to actually bully someone via Twitter, via Facebook, or text message.
I've seen cyberbullying online. I've never really did anything about it because I didn't want somebody to come back at me and hurt me.
I think that teachers don't get that. It's not that simple to solve bullying. It's not natural, and it doesn't feel comfortable to go to a teacher and say, "Can you please help me? I'm getting bullied." There's no simple fix. It's a process, and it depends on all the people involved, not just the person who's feeling targeted.
The names assembly is an opportunity for you to be able to speak your truth. It's an opportunity for you to get out of hiding and just say, "I'm going through this, and I'm pretty sure you guys are going through this too, so hear my story now, and yours."
Going into names for my freshman year, I knew nothing about it. I didn't know what to expect. I thought it was just going to be an assembly, where all of us are bound to get lectured out, but really, it's the students that get to talk.
Sometimes I get afraid, like, talking in public, and I was nervous. I didn't know how they would feel. I didn't know if they thought it was boring, because it takes a lot to such as a personal story, but they seemed to be touched by it.
In the end, I felt really good being able to express myself in that huge crowd of people, and knowing that there aren't, eventually going to be people who do relate to what I've been through.
During my speech, I asked the audience if they've ever seen cyberbullying, and majority of them raised their hand. And then I asked, "How many of you have ever done something to stop it?" And not a lot of people raised their hand.
The roles show that everyone's a part of bullying, whether you're the target, who's the one that gets bullied, or the aggressor that does the bullying. If you stand there, watch it happen, see it happen, you're still being a part of it because you're not doing anything.
I think you just kind of have to do it, and you're just going to feel great about yourself, knowing you did something good, and you weren't a bystander watching someone get bullied.
Because that's what can take the target from feeling horrible to feeling a lot better.
It just takes the first time. You need the guts.
Okay, so in the video, it basically recapped how bullying is there, and it's really hard to stand up to it. It's not natural, as one of them said, to just go up to someone who you see getting bullied and say, "Hey, stop." It takes a lot of guts, and the goal of the whole assembly was to empower people and to make them realize that it is okay to stand up to someone and tell your story about being bullied. So the day started off where we defined ropes. Everyone held up posters, and they read off what each poster meant. So they were "respect," "openness," "participation," "escuchar," which means "listen," for those of you who don't know, and "safety." So these really set the guidelines for the day, that people should be open, and that participation is the only way that we'll be able to make a change in our school, and that we have to respect others when they're talking and the stories that they share. Everything has to stay confidential so that people do feel safe when they're in our school. After that, they showed a video. It's called "Truth About Hate," and it went really deep into stereotypes and people who were, believed that they could be part of the Nazis, and they had Nazi symbols on them, kids our own age, and after they heard stories about people who were directly affected from the genocide and things like that, that changed their outlook. Following that, there was the Pyramid of Hate, and it went from being called names all the way up until genocide, which obviously, that isn't happening now in our school or anything, but the name-calling and physically getting bullied, all of those lead up to a bigger thing. After that, we had an open mic, and I put a star next to it because I really believe it was the most important part of the day. We were afraid, my team and some of the teachers, that no one was really going to come up and talk in front of the whole school about their bullying situations, or how they, like, stopped bullying, but we had a huge line of people just sharing stories about how they were bullied and how they handled it, and people who had never really come out to speak, people who looked shy in school, were talking in front of the whole school to tell their stories. It was just amazing. It truly was. I wish that you guys could see it. So we're looking to do something again, an open-mic type thing, so people can keep sharing their stories, because when we went back into our small group, I bounced around to each room, and the kids who went up said that they felt empowered, and they felt like they could come out and tell someone about if they're being bullied, or that they could stop, they could say something to the person that's bullying them, and they felt, like, stronger after that. So that was something that was just amazing. I've never seen something so amazing than the open mic. But at the end of the day, it really changed the outlook that kids had on bullying. It's hard to, like I said, it's not natural to stop bullying, or to go after the person you're being bullied, or say something, but they felt like they had a voice, even though that they were being pushed down so low by someone. So it was just amazing. And I feel like, personally, I feel like the kids in our school who watched the whole assembly and participated, they have a totally different view on what school and being kind to someone, and just like, a few nice words to someone, how that just changes your day. So that was the day. Does anyone have any questions? No? Yes?
So it's weeks later.
Yeah.
Do you still see students being more respectful or carrying forward? Do you see any glimpses of a continuation?
I think I do, because before the assembly, people didn't even look at a small joke towards someone as being bullying or putting someone down. And after the assembly, when they saw that just name-calling, that seems like a joke to the person who's saying it, isn't a joke to someone else. So at least in my friend group, I know that people don't really call each other names anymore. They realize that that really can put someone down. And it's hard that we had to have a day like this for people to realize that, but it also is amazing at the same time, that just one assembly with an open mic and, like, kids coming up and sharing their stories changes people's look on the way that they treat others, so.
Thank you. So for some of us, this is the second time that we got to hear you speak on this, because this originated with Ed Council, and I was so impressed with Brianna's presentation that I asked if they could bring it to the full board. You talked about wanting to do something else. You talked about additional open mics.
Yes.
Have you started planning any of that?
So this morning, we actually met with our club advisors about doing it maybe once a month during advisory, which is still in the works now. We definitely would have to do something leading up to the advisory, where we recap bullying and things like that, so that we're not just going into the gym as this whole school and saying, "Okay, who wants to talk?" Because that's not how it happened at all during this assembly, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a comment, not a question, for a sec. First of all, I'm very proud of you, Bri. She was on my soccer team years ago, so I'll thank her. My daughter's also a senior, and I was telling Bri before, when she came home telling me before the day, "Oh, it's a stupid half-day thing. I don't really want to go. Do I have to go?" I said, "Yes, you need to go. You need to tell me what this is. I want to know for our purpose here and for my own school." She came home and was just beaming. She talked stories for about an hour to me when I walked in the door that day. She went through one story after another after another that were very emotional, that had stuck with her. And I think now that I want to go back and talk to her again, now that it's a month later, and see if any of those stories, those ideas, still stick with her, but it was a very good presentation.
I know this personally, like, is something so important to me because of all the hard work that my club and I put into it, but after this, I'm just speechless. I don't even know how to describe this day because it was just so powerful. It's hard to, like, talk about it and express it in words, but.
I don't think you are speechless, thank you.
Like, we talk a lot.
Voice to this, very nicely. I'm sure there's a lot more depth and breadth to what you experienced and what you're able to share here, but my question is, how will you sort of pass your graduating?
Yeah.
How will you pass the tour so that it sort of ignites a fire among others who remain at Berlin?
Well, I do hope, we're in the process of figuring out who can be new leaders for the club, which we have a strong group of kids, but it's just so hard. I hope that ADL can come into the school again so that for the kids who didn't come to school, they can see it, and for the incoming freshmen, they can also see it, because I think once you tell, once you see it early on, when you're a freshman, when you grow up through high school, you'll realize, like, it's not cool to call somebody a name. Like, it's not. And it's hard to understand that until you see an open mic with students who are in your class who don't really talk. They keep to themselves, and they come up in front of the whole school and they tell their stories. It's crazy.
Yeah, I think it's, it sounds like it was an incredibly powerful experience, and I hope that it becomes more a part of the culture at the high school as it goes here.
I do too, yeah.
So, great work.
Thank you, guys.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
And just real quick, in closing, the reason that we're playing the video from the ADL is that we really felt to give students a safe place. We told students, "No cell phones. Cell phones stay in the classroom. You're not allowed to bring them to the assembly. You're not allowed to tape any of this. This has to be a safe environment for all students," and they did not have, well, I don't want to say they didn't have a problem with it, they did a little bit, but once they got to recognize what was going on, they understood. So as much as we wanted to take part of the program to kind of promote it, we felt it needed to be a safe place for students, so none of the teachers, none of our video people had cameras there for the assembly. So thank you. She did an amazing job.
Amazing. Excellent. Thank you. First off, Brianna, this is your big chance to sneak out if you'd like. And next up, we're going to go to committee reports, correspondents to the board. Alex, you're on. Sorry.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I was a part of the ADL session, and it was a really powerful moment, because the shire kids were the ones that got up and spoke, and outgoing, the quote-unquote outgoing ones were the ones that were sitting back and taking it all in, so it was powerful to me. But to transition, the Berlin High School Music Department will be presenting their play "Legally Blonde: The Musical" in the high school's auditorium on March 2nd through the 4th. The girls' varsity basketball team is starting their class tournament tonight against Stonington. It's about an hour, it's close to Rhode Island. And then the boys' varsity basketball team plays Suddington next Monday in the first round of the Division III state tournament.
Thanks. Congratulations on making the tournament. Well done. We wish you luck. Find out how the girls do tonight. Thanks for the report. Any questions for Alex?
Committee reports.
We have an ad hoc.
We finally have a presentable transportation policy. So we have later in tonight's meeting, the first reading on that policy.
Okay.
And we talked about it a little bit, and are ready to move it forward, so.
Excellent. It'd be nice to put that one away.
Indeed. Removing horse-drawn carriages as a condition of transportation policy is an important target for it.
And Communications Committee.
Yep, we just, we just met, and we talked a little bit about communication in terms of the board budget, as well as safety came up. So the idea was floated about perhaps even having a public meeting with parents and people in town, just kind of to field questions and also talking about what's going on in schools right now in terms of trying to make sure that the schools are safe. Maybe layering in a little bit of some of the steps that are being taken in schools and just trying to get information out. So it's one of the things we talked about. Perhaps even a joint session with the police as well.
Excellent. Obviously, that's a big topic in the world today with what's going on. So we'll stay posted and see what we come up with. I know Brian will talk to us about that, so. Brian?
I have two communications to the board. I would like to thank all of you so very much for the beautiful orchid plant, one of my favorites. With the loss of my sister, the plant, the sympathy wishes are truly comforting. It's Kim Stripling, Griswold Cafeteria. Second, dear Superintendent Benigni and Board of Education Team, I want to thank you all for your ongoing support during difficult times. Jess and I appreciate the support we have received from you as we grieve the loss of our son Dylan. Also, thank you for the gift card and warm wishes. We appreciate the love and support we receive from the district. Best regards, Matt and Jessica Correa. We sent a gift card and a little flowers for that. And Matt returned to work today, his first day back.
Thank you, Brian. Moving along, we'll close committee reports and move to Audience of Citizens. Is there anyone here who would like to address the Board of Education this evening? No one jumping up and down, raising their hands? Okay, seeing no one, we will close Audience of Citizens. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda. Copies of the items were in your packets that you received at your home. Would anyone like to add, or remove, or discuss anything in the Consent Agenda at this point? Yes, sir?
At the special meeting of February 12th, I was present, even though I noted as absent, and I left, you know, before the regular meeting that night.
Yeah, that is correct. You were at the special meeting. So we will amend that. Special meeting 12. Okay, so with an amendment having Fred Morley as attending, is there anybody else that would like to have any changes to the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll adjourn to a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I have a motion by Tim.
I'll second.
A second by Jamie. Questions or further discussion? All in favor?
I think.
Close. Motion carries nine zero. Next on the agenda, we have new business, open choice program participation. Brian, you're on.
So in your packet, you have a printout of the anticipated, the current enrollment as well as the anticipated enrollment. But I thought, before we discuss the numbers, I'd like to share with you some comments, some choice students from the high school.
Pierre is great and I've joined so many extracurricular activities and...
Yeah, I know where to go, I know where to go here.
We were gonna tell you.
Brian, I saw Barbara setting this up earlier this evening and she like had this... I thought she was believing in confusion. I was all excited because she was like confused. And a chant that went with it.
There was a crowbar involved too, I think.
I know, it's gotta be there. I know where it's gotta go. I know, I know where it has to go.
We're not lost.
Brian, what do you think I do when you're not here, Barbara? So here's what I thought. Rather than just giving you numbers, I thought it'd be interesting to hear from some of the students. So we asked three questions. It's about eight minutes long, I believe, eight, eight and a half minutes. Sally Grady here from, has been our choice liaison for the last five years. She's also a school social worker. But I think it's important that you hear from the students what it's meant to be part of Berlin Public Schools and especially the high schools. So with that, hopefully this works. And Barbara, I know you're here. I need you.
Thank you, Brian.
Work is fine. Nope, he's still.
I think the wires loose on the jack, Brian.
Yeah?
Yeah, it wasn't working for me when I first came in.
I've been the high school social worker for the past thirty years. Of those thirty years, the last five, I have been the open choice liaison. It has been with great pleasure and excitement to work with these individuals, these participants that come to our school every day after a long bus drive, stay after school, participate in our extracurricular activities, and truly be a part of our Berlin community, give you some of our participants.
Hi, my name is Kobe Higgin and I'm a sophomore.
Hi, my name is Denay Lewis and I'm a junior.
Hi, my name is Dr. Rivera and I'm a junior.
Hi, my name is Carol Wabron, I'm a senior.
Hi, my name is Denay Tahada and I'm a sophomore.
How has your life changed since coming to the Berlin Public Schools?
Um, I can say that my life has changed a lot because not only do the teachers and staff here at Berlin High School care about the students, but they actually can relate to what we go through at home. And when I was in Hartford Schools, I was slacking of work, you know, missing school, coming in late a lot. And ever since I've been here, I'm keeping up with my work for the most part, following along in, in class, doing what I have to do. And I think that a lot of other kids have the opportunity to come here.
My life has changed since coming to Berlin Public Schools. The curriculum is more stricter and harder from where I previously went to. And I think that I started setting high expectations for myself when I started getting the curriculum and learning how to study and manage my time-wise and especially juggling basketball and school and other different positions that I'm in. So I'm thankful that I was able to get good, get good grades, get attention and everything from my teachers and appreciate all the opportunities I've got here.
My life has changed extremely since I've...
My life has changed, eh, my life has changed extremely by coming to this Berlin School because it's more help from the teachers, from the adults in the school just show that they care a lot about the students and that just don't push them away after a few different times talking to them.
Um, my life's changed since I've come to Berlin Schools. So I, the teachers here, they're more helpful and you can have like one-on-one with them and they'll help you out. They'll take their time. And you can build a relationship between teachers. Like, I have a few good relationships with some of my teachers and I can trust them. The staff here is great and I've joined so many extracurricular activities and, and it helped me break out of my shell a little bit because I was really quiet and now I have more courage to come out and speak and not be so scared to interact with other people.
Oh, my life has changed a lot. I'm definitely more mature. And I remember I used to be a troublemaker where I used to go. And like, now I'm just like, I stay out of trouble and stuff like that.
What opportunities does Berlin High School provide that your home school did not?
Um, I came to Berlin Schools in sixth grade. I was at McGee. And they gave me a lot of opportunities, not to, not to, they gave me a lot of opportunities to actually know who I am. And a lot of the staff, also at McGee, had sat down and talked to me a lot about like what been going on at home. And that showed to me that they actually cared. And not only, and also at the high school, there's teachers like Ms. Grady. She sit down, she talk, talked to me like what's going on at home. And I, I, I thank her because like Hartford Schools, the teachers and staff there, they're, they're happy that it's like the, the teachers here are like more worried about you. And like, they want to be there for you.
Um, I came here in sixth grade to McGee. So making that transition, I was thankful that I had somebody to talk to, as far as my counselors and Ms. Grady. Because that was rough and charging, the new curriculum I was learning. Um, the new opportunity that I gathered was that now I sit at cabinets in the CYC meeting, the promising license that I'm thankful for that I got from Mr. Bosso. So building a new program that I never would have expected that I would be able to get into and I'm thankful for.
I started coming to Berlin Schools in first grade at Hubbard Elementary. And through that time, I've been through a lot with the teachers being there for me when my mom passed and everything. And it was actually really good to have the support at school and not just at home. And it helped coming to school.
And so I got here in seventh grade and so most of the kids, they were, they've already went through sixth grade and they've already got some of the experience. And then coming here and just not knowing basic things for science, like what's an independent and dependent variable? And having to ask my teacher and then like looking at me like I, like, not like I was dumb, but kind of in a way. And then having to help me progress and just get to the point where I need to be. And having the teachers here at the high school help and be able to help us organize our lives and our things that we want to do, so like extracurricular activities and having your, your, um, what's it called? Electives, yeah, having your electives based on your career. Like, I always talk, my counselor, she helped me a lot trying to figure out what I want to do, helping with my schooling. And that's not something I would say some of the schools in Hartford would do because I went to the school and the teacher, she just gave up on us. Like, at one point, she just stopped teaching and just told us to do whatever we want because she was tired of it. But here, they don't give up. They actually push and push to try to make you succeed.
Um, I came to Berlin Schools in third grade at Griswold Elementary School. And I'm thankful for the teachers and like the opportunities that we have are very good, like the after-school academy. Because like, when I miss days and I fall behind on schoolwork, I have teachers like constantly nagging on me. And like, I'm not gonna lie, at the moment, like, they get annoyed, but like, I only, like, I notice that they do it because they care.
Why is it important to graduate from Berlin High School?
Um, I think it's important to graduate from Berlin High School because it would help me get into a, a good college, hopefully, and, um, um, get, start a nice job.
Um, it's important for me to graduate from Berlin because now I would be more prepared for the real world. I would be prepared to go to a good college that I want, um, be more prepared for the profession that I want to go for.
It's important for me, in my case, to graduate from Berlin High School because I know for a fact if I studied in Hartford School, I probably wouldn't have graduated. And now I'm gonna graduate and I actually didn't think about going to college, which I probably would have never thought of.
It's extremely important for me to bro, to graduate from Berlin because like, I'm a senior. I'm halfway there. I'm so close in. Just graduating from here, or just graduating in general, would just be a huge accomplishment for me. Like, I'm already accepted to my school. I'm just ready to graduate, get my degree and say, hey, I graduated from this high school that changed me socially and like mentally. And it's the, yeah, pretty great accomplishment.
Oh, I think it's important to graduate from Berlin High School because if I would've stayed in Hartford School, then like I would have the teachers constantly pushing me forward. And then to like graduate like good grades, not just like barely graduating, but like actually be high graduating.
On behalf of all of us here, these students, these fine students and all the participants that could not be part of this taping, we want to thank you for the great opportunities, for the great experiences that we have all shared, for the tears, the laughter, and the camaraderie. Thank you.
I can't tell you how excited I would have shared that with you, so. So just a little bit behind the numbers. I think what's important to note here is different grade levels. And also, different numbers, the different... I asked Sally Grady to just provide four or five students. She selected the students. But I think when you look at the seats that we're asking for, there were various grade levels that students entered. Some entered in sixth, some entered in first, some entered in third, the one girl entered in seventh. But as of right now, as you can see, they're all meeting with some success. So when looking at the numbers, the first page, current enrollment, ninety-two students, seventeen eighteen. Projected enrollment for eighteen nineteen drops, ten students graduate drops to eighty-two students. With that being said, we know that one student will be exiting, so it'll be down to eighty-one. As you know, we are at that three percent mark. That three percent mark provides us with six thousand dollars per choice student, which is definitely factored into our budget. If we were to go below three thousand, three percent, that rate of six thousand dollars would change. So the last few years, we've not taken that many choice students within. And I met with Deb Rero, who's the director, and she gave me a printout. I didn't put it with the packet here of the projection over the last five years, which has decreased. So she also shared with me that we're typically a two-to-one acceptance ratio, meaning that if we're accepting, we're asking for ten students, we're saying we'll take ten, typically four or five will come. So my thought to you as I'm proposing tonight, at this point, there are sixty-seven students that potentially could enter Berlin Public Schools. I'm on the second page and you can see the various grade levels that they'd be entering. There are some siblings, any sibling that would like to come to the Berlin Public Schools. We did accept them first. That was a priority, obviously. I think that having brothers or sisters in the same district and coming to the same school brings a cohesiveness. But then we did potentially want to offer up the sixty-seven seats. Talking to the administration, we do have the room within the schools, within the grade levels to do that. The three students at the tenth grade level, that is late to adopt students into the district, but we thought that if students were able to make transition, as the one girl shared with you who's going to Johnson and Wales, that she came into seventh grade and has met with success, and that we would, would, would try that, so.
Questions for Brian regarding the choice seats here?
I just have a curiosity question, just so I can understand this. So on the first page, the projected open choice, these are maintained seats. So for example, it looks like grade four will have four maintained seats. And then on the second page, it looks as though for grade four, these are proposed for twenty eighteen, nineteen. There's an additional...
Five.
Five. How are those numbers determined? In other words, how?
So what happens is they have, parents of choice have an opportunity to select three different districts they'd like to attend. And then when they go into the selection process, then those seats are offered to the district. So we were offered, these students asked, we were offered at that grade level.
Gotcha.
So we have a choice whether to just refuse certain grade levels or to allow those seats. My concern long-term is to fall below the three percent. There's also different incentive money tied to taking in students at the K-level as well as some of the other students if we're taking siblings and so on. But to me, it was more of, we've been over a hundred before. I'm not so sure it's gonna be a two-to-one ratio. It may be a, you know, three-to-one. And so my concern is by not offering, we, we could, you know, potentially be very close to that. And to be honest with you, the numbers, when I looked at them, what schools they replaced at were sheerly based on numbers. So if you looked at, say, for instance, if we're looking at grade levels, we looked at if, you know, second grade at Willard had twenty students, let's say, and Hubbard was at fifteen, then we would put the choice students at Hubbard. It's surely based on numbers. So we tried to keep siblings together within that school, if possible. So if we had, you know, a fifth grader from one family and a third grader wanted to come, we'd put the third grader with the fifth grader.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I know that we had, for open choice enrollment, last year was ninety-two. What was our total projected open choice seats for this kind of school year, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen?
We could've...
What if we decided as a board last year?
We could've taken. Oh, I want to say we could've given.
Just because this number does seem like a huge jump because you did say, you know, we've, we've had over a hundred before, but going from ninety to a hundred to a hundred and forty-eight seats, like, how's that compare?
I want to say last year, I want to say last year, we offered eighteen seats. But I could get that information. I have my office.
So were we at like a hun, under a hundred and twenty? A hundred and ten?
Yeah, well, this current year, we only have ninety-two, right? So if we offered eighteen, right, I can, I can get that information to you.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial, just to know what we... So if we, our total projected open choice seats for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, one forty-eight, are we gonna be filling all those seats?
The likelihood of filling of seeing where, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
In, in years past, over the last five years, that's where the data came from, we only filled, if we offered those eighteen seats, we only filled nine. Like, we're filling at a one-to-two ratio of what we offer.
So based on that comment, we would have a hundred and fourteen students in the district.
Right.
Not one forty-eight. Because you take the sixty-seven divided by two, just, just doing the math.
And I think, I think it'll be less than that.
Right. I, I just...
Where would a hundred and...
It just seems like a big jump. And that's why I'm just wondering, well, I remember last year, this data was presented to us and we... last year, this data was presented to us, and we, you know, approved the number, I'm just curious, what number did we approve last year versus what's filled this year? So then when we approved the one forty-eight?
I, I, I can get that number for you.
Yeah.
What I can tell you, over the last five years, what we used to approve, each year it was decreasing. So there was, there was a fewer students each year being, it was being decreased, the number of students that were accepted, and that's why we're at that close to that three percent, right? Cuz at one point, we had forty students in one of the buildings, I think it was McGee. But, you know, I definitely can provide that number, I can...
Thank you, Brian.
I could run to the off, I mean, I know where it was.
Can I ask another question, just about the kindergarten? You said there are, um, different sort of incentives incentivized, right? So if you enroll students at the kindergarten, which honestly, I think probably, if we were to look at the, um, the outcomes for students who are enrolled at kindergarten and stay through, um, just that little sampling, one student came in first grade, I thought that's a much different experience to be here, first grade through twelfth grade, as opposed to seventh or eighth grade through twelfth grade or whatnot. So I'm just curious as to how those decisions are made about accepting younger children to...
I, i- in a, in a perfect way, I think, taking in all students at the kindergarten level would be the best. But there are those natural transitions, so a transition from, from K, the middle school transition at six, the high school transition at nine are the more natural transitions. The likelihood of getting students at the off-grade levels is greater, though, because there's not as many seats. So when a student goes into the choice program, the seats that are available at the off-grade levels are not offered by that many, it's just many districts. So when you're accepting those students to off-grade levels, there's incentives there, too. But I think, you know, some of the information I was sharing in the video, there were students that came in off-grades that are very successful. The one girl is now on the correct website for her acceptance in Johnson and Wales as a, you know, a huge success story for, for the choice program. So, I mean, I don't anticipate us being at that one forty-eight, we could accommodate it, I think that will probably be around one fifteen at best.
That maintains us at the three percent level?
Well, if you're talking about around twenty-seven hundred students, and, you know, you're taking, the percentage are twenty-seven times three, so it gets to eighty-one, another twenty-seven out to eighty-one, we're talking about one oh eight. So we potentially could hit the four percent mark, and it could be additional funds if we did hit the four percent mark. It's not to say that we would, though, if we went to around one hundred and ten students, we could hit the four percent mark.
But it moves us to the higher end of the range, right? So we're closer, we're...
Right, so essentially, if we took...
Like, I know that we were, at one point, we were at three point nine eight percent, and they all stayed there to round up.
So if you look, though, with anticipation next year, you know, the other piece is, see, another way to look at this is, look, you know, you asked about numbers, I could without going into the office and getting that, if you look at the first page, so right now, there's, you can think about how many students were accepted, look at the number of students in the lower grades as compared to the higher grades, and as I said, the last five years, we've not taken as many students, and you can see that based on the enrollment. So there's only six students at the K level, three at the first, six at the second, four, eight. You're looking up, go backwards, now, start at twelve, there's ten students, eleven students, seven. We used to take a greater number of students, just, just, you know, trust, I just from the data that's here, without giving you specifics.
Obviously, you were not superintendent at the time when this was, this was presented last year, but do you have an, a logic behind taking less at that point? Were there, was there a driving reason?
Yes. The driving reason was that I think that there was concerns with, with a student and some of the concerns with that student became difficult, difficult to handle with choice, where the district's position was and where the position of choice was as far as one student. And that precipitated a decrease in, in the number of students being taken.
So that's, that is a tricky question.
Go ahead.
Sure. And it will look to you and Linda, because of course, we don't know, I mean, any student could move into our district at any point in time, but I imagine the tricky piece was the drawn resources, be they special ed or...
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't so much a drawn resources, it was...
Human resources.
It was a concern of what that parent wanted within the building or within a different building, and then thoughts about the district. So the resource draw, we talked about at length of administrative council, that, you know, students, students in the choice program do, do use resources, I'm not gonna say they don't. If they're a special education student, the, the Hartford is billed for those services, so we don't, that money's not on our budget. If they're using services within, within the building under SRBI, scientific research intervention, right, so different reading help and things of that nature, math help, that would come from our resources, and that's why we're receiving the funds. So do the students need resources typically? Yes, they do, for, for a period of time. As you heard many of the students say, it took me time to get up to the need and the expectations of the, of Berlin Public School, public schools. So the sooner we have them, the better. So I'm not gonna say that, that they don't, because they do.
Well, I'm sure there's period of transition that requires, you know, one thing I would say was a repeated message from each of those students in the film was, um, the support that they received from the people who work within our district. That, I think, speaks volumes, right, to, it, those are human resources, which is a great thing that they all felt as though they were supported and really benefited from, um, the support that they have here. And I think, you know, all of our students, of course, should have that same sentiment.
I have a question here, for the child that, um, withdrew on the sixteenth of November, that wasn't a dissatisfaction with the school district, was it? Okay.
There's some sentiment that some students, we don't get to pick the students in that place, so we don't know what students we're getting. You know, there is some, people have positioned that students, well, they're not satisfied there, so they come here, they're not satisfied here. And that, that can't be the place, that can't be the case at times. But I think overall, there is a sense of satisfaction, and many students are more successful here than they would be elsewhere, as you saw in the video. You know, my thought is, we're getting close to that three percent threshold, which is very important to a very, uh, tight budget as it is to fall below that. Secondly, we have to increase enrollment, so we do have the space, we're not overcrowding classrooms and making them too tight. And third, I, I honestly believe that in acceptance, most of these students also can apply to magnet schools, other than, other than a slight, I think there's six or seven that, that only applied to open choice, which you have a greater likelihood of getting. They may get accepted to magnets first, and then they don't come to choice. And so we may be at a one-to-three percentage ratio. So if that's the case, now we're looking at only, you know, we're at...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two students that could possibly be here. And, you know, to, to select out certain groups and to go less than that, well, now we might only have ten students coming in, so it gets, and if students decide to leave or whatever, we could be even closer to that. So there is some variability in doing this. I think that in years past, taking less, we knew we were close to the number, it wasn't gonna be an issue, and I think we're, you know, at that point where it is.
When will the number solidify, if seats are offered?
They will go out to, they will go, the, the, our seat offering has to be in, I believe, within the next...
March first.
Yeah, March first.
And then when...
But, but, but when the seats are offered, they have two more days to still offer further seats. So we originally had fifty-nine students, and then within the last, that was a week ago, and all this, today, we actually added some additional seats that weren't in the original, so what I shared with the administrators was a little different. We'll know, um, we'll know in April, the end of April, beginning of May, what kind of numbers will should be coming in.
I, I have a question on the date, you know, it says Tuesday, March first, but March first is Thursday? So is this Tuesday, March first?
No, I, I have...
Or is it Thursday?
I get Thursday, I have a Thursday.
Okay, Thursday.
Thursday.
This week?
Yes. For, for just submitting the numbers. So, you know, if we agree with the numbers, then it's fine, we could go and take certain grade levels off, we could modify this further. My recommendation to you to look at the numbers, looking at the class size and the things, that we could accommodate these students.
My question to Julia is, are there quest, that, you sound like you have a concern, is there something in this that, that you have a concern regarding, or...
It just seems like a much higher number, I do have another question, thinking about it, though, thank you for going back to that, but this is kind of unrelated, so if, if we have a student that comes to us and they require special education services, and it ends up going into an outplacement, do we have to pay for that?
No.
We pay for it upfront and then they reimburse?
They reimburse, the offer.
Okay, so it's not like, it's gonna be like, we're getting all this money from choice, but it's stuck in the well drug?
We pay six thousand, we pay a six thousand.
Okay, so I, I have heard concerns from people in town, and again, like, I'm not an expert at this, I can't speak to this, but, you know, and I wasn't able to answer the question, but it, you know, it was, why do we keep opening the seats if these students are taking our resources? And again, I'm a big advocate of the achievement gap and equal education opportunities and educational equality, so, you know, I'm just wondering, could you just speak a little bit to that? So, you know, it's on the record, and then we can all speak more to it. So if someone does come to us and say, well, you know, you were at ninety-one and now we're at one forty-eight, right, we, we will all be able to speak a little bit better to our resources and...
Because I think when you looked, when I looked at the numbers, I said, if you looked at specific grade levels, you can, you know, to add two students to a class of seventeen and make it nineteen, does, is it still, is, is a teacher still able to be effective within that class? And the answer is yes.
Absolutely.
So we weren't putting the numbers, especially at the primary grade, above, you know, above twenty, or, you know, above out of line, it takes, so we weren't stretching our numbers within the class. I can't tell you what resources students are gonna need, because we don't know what, what the students need when they, they commit. But with that being said, if we don't take in additional students, we could fall below that, that three percent, and that means restructuring of the budget further. That definitely does, because, you know, that money is factored into the budget and tied directly to salaries, so, you know.
You know, we had eighteen special ed students, as you've heard me say this before, last summer, eighteen students moved in to district, and those who weren't even choice students.
Absolutely.
They needed so many resources, so it's, it's, you know, we always talk about that, it is an analysis we can sit, sit down and look at, but we see that our students do, so, I mean, whatever resources any of the students need, that's where they go.
Oh, without a doubt, I think that's important, I just, you know, if the question is brought up to me again after this meeting, well, you guys have extended the numbers significantly, and this was already a concern of some people, like, I wanna be able to, you know, be informed about it and speak to it in a way where I can be confident in what I'm saying and say, you know, I do believe in educational equality and closing the achievement gap, and I think this is a way we absolutely can do it. I just wanna be more educated when I speak on behalf of it, and not just make stuff up or say, I don't know.
Well, I think a lot of people don't understand that the special ed services, we do bill. So if it's anything over the six thousand dollars, so if they need a one-to-one para, or if they need speech and language services, or the special ed teacher, so we look at, Joanne, my secretary, does, uh, calculate, and she has a little figure that she, and we do bill back, so they do have to provide us additional money. If those students go above the six thousand resources...
You bill back on in-house resources, personnel resources?
Yeah, so we look at the teacher's salary, so say one of the students...
So literacy support, things like that?
Right.
And so you could potentially, I think this is kind of circling back to what I was, um, trying to ask, but obviously not very particularly before, which is, you know, I think the concern that people may have is drawing on the human resources. So even though you're billing, um, there's, to your point, there's still a draw on human resources, but would it allow you, would those funds allow you to then hire someone as an, you know, an additional sort of part-time person or contract, um, employ, contracted employee to... Okay. So that's, I think, the part that we need to flesh out for people.
The pair is the easiest, because if we need a para, then we hire a para in that...
And it's billed back to Hartford.
Hartford pays for that, we hire a para.
So the resources, the resources that we had allocated for some other student who was a Berlin student are not impacted in that case?
Correct.
Maybe short-term, right at the outset, while you're trying to find that person to fill that role. But ultimately, they are not.
I think that's the point, to really be able to clarify for people, is that it's not spreading our internal resources more.
Not yet, nope, and that's what, you know, every time, whether it's the eighteen students moving in or the choice students, you haven't heard them scream yet, but, yeah, so, you know, when that starts to happen, then I go to Brian and Eva and say, okay, you know, our numbers are starting.
And choice funds, are we, um, billing for those types of things a hundred percent? We're not into like a seventy-five percent and anything like that, we're, we're not at risk.
Okay. Is there some kind of a formula that you're using, you were your secretary, to figure out exactly what the cost would be above and beyond? Because obviously, the risk, as I see it, is the, are the eighteen kids coming in new at the high school level? Because the unfortunate truth is, as many of those kids are relative, is they're, they're below grade level in many ways when they get to the school system, especially if they're coming in this late. And so the concern then is the draw on human resources, the draw on the finances, but there's a, you said there's a, a formula that's figured out as for what human resources they're needing?
So she takes, the easiest way to look at it is, say, one of those students is in our behavior program at the elementary level, she takes the teacher's salary and divides it by how many kids are in that program, and that's how you calculate it out, the speech and language services, and that's how we calculate it out. I don't think it's speak more.
Yeah, there's not much more to say, everything you're saying is accurate, so...
Right.
Then we just send the bill to Hartford, Hartford, you have to deduct the six thousand dollars, cuz we're getting six thousand, a thousand dollars per child, and we get the, the money from Hartford.
The six thousand is the upfront?
Correct.
Yeah, we've already got it.
Yeah, so anything over that.
Okay.
As opposed to our eighteen, for example, just going back to your example, our eighteen kids who move in, no one's paying up a Berlin taxpayers.
Right.
So there's actually opportunity, I think, when we think about this, even if we're just looking for them, at it from a financial standpoint, which I hope nobody is looking strictly from a financial standpoint, but it's something to address.
Yeah, and that's how it's always been done, so we have to stay with those four and those two, cuz we get, then getting audited on, and the auditor said, yep, that's the correct way to do it, so.
And then transportation, does Hartford pay for that as well?
Yes.
I just, I just wanna know more about it, just so when people ask, I can...
Yeah, so even if they have to, so most of the kids come on a bus, but some students do need, um, a van transportation, and we have to go through this whole process with Hartford, but Hartford completely takes care of transportation. Even if it's after school, like, we had one little boy that we couldn't put on the, on the bus on Friday and had to stay, and we had to get a cab, dad didn't have transportation, have a cab come, and they have all this type of voucher program that can help support families like that, too, so.
So does Hartford arrange the transportation, or you...
We work very closely with, with Sue McNally in my office, it has to be delineated in the IEP, but I guess, if it's different, if, you know, if it's a van transportation, if they're on the bus, then it's all arranged.
Um, what percentage of the choice kids are actually special ed kids?
Special ed, I, I would have to look at that.
If you kind of thought, I mean, is it more than fifty percent?
No.
Exactly, it'd be so. So I don't think, I mean, I think that there's this idea that these kids are coming in and they, you know, take all these resources, but I really don't think that they do. I think that our own kids that are raised and are moving here, I mean, like, you know, like you said, eighteen kids moved in, so the stereotype that I think that people have about the choice kids, it's, it's frustrating to me because they really, they're not necessarily the kids that need all these extra resources.
Yeah, but I think that's why it's important we talk about that, so, you know, if anyone wants to go back and watch it on that big TV, or refer back to our meeting, or talk to any of us and follow up with us, we can accurate, accurately speak to it. I do not know that it was less than fifty percent up till today, I never thought about it, I wouldn't have been able to gas or put money on it, you know? Um, I think it's just important information for us to all have, so we can go out and speak. When people ask us questions, we can speak and not make the board...
Yeah, it's just a stereotype that the town has in general, I think, is what frustrates.
Right, and I think that's why it's our job, our due diligence to know about it, so we can speak to it.
I know, it's not just... It's because, probably cuz I'm a social worker, it's just very frustrating to me that, that that is out there.
I'm trying to pull last year's numbers to answer your question this evening, so that if he has, if we have to have something in by Thursday, we essentially have to either adopt or not adopt tonight. So, uh, to fill some space here, I'm gonna turn this back to the teachers that are in the room, actually, and say thank you very much for the support that you give to these, to these, uh, students. Obviously, it meant a lot to them, it means a lot to us, so we thank you, I know that you'll pass that along to the rest of your group. So we thank you for that.
I was afraid Kara was gonna say that she had beaten up a little bit for a capstone.
I think the other important takeaway here is that, from Linda and others, Eva, we've learned that there is an after-school, high school application of math and algebra, so there's a silver lining for you. So there's still learning for you, Alex, with all the math that you're doing. You're going to have a place to use.
Okay, so what I could share with you is the last two years. So in, for sixteen seventeen, we offered a total of five seats. We offered one seat at McGee, one seat at Griswold, then one seat at McGee, one seat, four seats at Hubbard, that made our five.
That was what we offered?
That was what we, that's what we actually offered. But we also filled them.
In addition to what we had, right?
In addition to what we had, so we had, at that point, we had a total of ninety-four enrolled. And then last year. Seventeen eighteen. This is what we offered. Twenty-three, it's like twenty-three. But that's not, that's accurate. Offered. Offered, we didn't fill them.
No, but it's consistent with this, where we're offering, right?
Sixty-seven. Five, fill there. Twenty-three were offered. That's with the siblings. And we offered twelve seats in ninth, five seats in sixth. Seventeen, and then we did six, we did six seats in K. So we offered at the natural transition points, ninth, sixth, and K, our total of twenty-one, twenty-three seats. So that was last year, so if we, I don't have, yeah.
Expected eighty-one to eighty-two, right?
Right, yep. Two to one, right, so there's your
I have another curiosity question. Do we only offer to students from Hartford?
It's Hartford's choice. Yep, students have to reside in Hartford. I can go back and get the last five years.
No, I think it's fine. I guess my only question to you, and I'll, you know, do you think we're opening it up too much? Or do you think this is fine? And I know you already answered that, but
My recommendation is, you take the seats that are offered. If the board would like something else, then we can, you get to tell me directly what you'd like me to do.
I respect that, I just
Julia, just keep asking questions, whatever you need from me. I could take the
Yeah.
Just so you can educate the public.
I understand what you're saying, so.
I mean, it's, I don't anticipate the two to one, because when I looked at the five-year average, it was a little less than two to one, and meeting with the director. I think what's going to happen, though, what I think will be the guarantee, is that the students, if you look at the sheet that came in your packet, the students at the off-levels, so if you look at the second page, the students that are in the eighth grade, which is an off-level, seventh grade, the fourth, third, second, so we got three, three in first, four, seven, nine, fourteen, and then eight. The off-grade, we have a greater likelihood of the students coming. Now, could you anticipate that those students would be students that have concerns or issues where they are, just want to leave? You may draw that assumption, I can't say that for sure. You saw the students that came from different day levels that are meaningless success. But those students are more likely to come based on what the director of choice told me, because he said that there's not as many seats offered in other options in other districts, because most people like to offer the appropriate levels, so K, six, and nine. So, you know, so if, you know, her message to me is if you want to guarantee that you're at that mark, then those seats, the seats that you potentially are more likely than two to one to receive. But it doesn't mean that we can't cut this back. I mean, if we think it's too high, we definitely can cut it back. I'm saying that this number does not put our class sizes at an alarming rate based on our population where we are. So it doesn't put class sizes, or we need an extra teacher, or it's going to put class sizes that are, how do you say, at one school is not going to be that much above the other. When we do the placements, it kind of balances the numbers at each school.
So that's an important comment, but now I'm going to twist it a little bit here. But what happens, we've put a budget forward. What happens if what comes back to us from Board of Finance or the town comes back, where we need to make significant cuts to our budget? We've already, we already know that those will impact our staffing pattern. Then how does this come into play?
I think if you have to cut a grade level teacher, if we have to cut a grade level teacher, you're just going to push those class sizes up beyond that one or two extra students that you're taking at that grade level. It's not going to, it's going to be, you know, to look at that, to say, if we had to cut a first-grade teacher across the, you know, one first-grade teacher, you know, if class sizes are at twenty for first grade, and cutting one teacher in a building when you have four, that's going to be giving each T, the three that are left, you're going to be giving each of them six or seven students. So you're going to push class sizes of the first grade up to twenty-six or twenty-seven. So, I mean, if we're anticipating that, then
I think it's just going to be part of our conversation, is, right, is you play those what-if scenarios. Once you open the seats, do we have, do you have the ability to retract them after? Or once they're open, they're, it's open?
Once they're open during the window, and then we can close them after the window. They don't stay open forever. So once they're open, then that goes out to the parents. And what, you know, what was suggested was that if you want, once you declare these seats, that you can, and then you get a name and then phone number and address of every student that's there. And then what some districts do are reaching out and actually calling the homes and talking to the parents to almost solicit a student to come to Berlin, or to whatever district it is. We've not done that in the past.
But is that something you'd advocate for?
If we're putting the seat out there, and we're really saying we'd like the students to come, I think that would be a great notion, too. We want to be part of the school and make a comment and say, come visit the school.
You know, at my charter school in New Haven, we would get students, you know, it was only for New Haven students, but we wanted those students, we need to fill out seats. We would, we, us teachers, we would actually go out to the homes and do home visits, to do, you know, what you were just saying, to solicit them, to welcome them, to tell them about our school, and to really get them to commit, and, you know, that's something that we did, and, you know, it worked out with great success.
Okay, I just have one question. Looking at the largest numbers in the ninth grade at fifteen, you did mention that, you know, ideally, we start them in kindergarten, that would be the best scenario. Does the opposite pose the opposite problem? Are, is the history of those who started in the high school harder? A harder transition than those that start in, say, middle school?
I think it's more difficult to start in high school, absolutely. We put things in place, the students spoke of, such as an after-school program, the choice liaison, to kind of act as that. And the choice grant that we receive, not the chef money for six thousand, which you could choice, it's social academic, it's just for that purpose, so that students can get acclimated. And I would say that ninety percent of the choice students participate at some point in the after-school program, because there's staff available, they're not due to work, they get assistance. So it's definitely an easier transition at the elementary than it is at the secondary level.
I assume, Brian, that you've made some hard and deep thought into this, where you wouldn't have presented it to us, and you think this could be successful for us this year with your number, with the numbers that you're suggesting we go after?
I looked at our enrollment, I looked at the, we've had enrollment in the school far, much more than where we're at now. We have a decreasing enrollment. This is the way the increase enrollment, we have a decreasing budget. We have the money's tied up to staff, and I have, I still do have great concerns of falling below a three percent mark. So if we took the students this year, or saw what students came this year, it doesn't mean next year we have to take any seats if we're at that mark. But if we don't take them at some point, we could fall below that mark. So that's, that was the rationale why I said, even today, when there were, we're at fifty-nine, I believe, or fifty-eight, and went to sixty-seven, I said we should add them. And then if you direct me differently, I can cut it back, I can cut back the odd grade levels that are there, we can go forward wherever you'd like. But I brought it for you as a whole, based on that rationale. And I mean, I'm not going to be offended either way. I mean, I agree with, you know, the questions that are being asked about defending it to the public, I'm well aware of that.
And from your standpoint, and I think you already answered this, but just did want to make sure, quick. And from your standpoint, the number of enrollments we have now spread across these grades, number of teachers we have are certainly adequate for those, we wouldn't be planning on dropping any of those teachers anyways at this point.
No, right now, it's adequate. Matt brings up a valid point, that if we had to go in and change at the elementary level in particular, it would definitely change, you know.
Right, but we, but we wouldn't be, we're not suggesting, or we recommending in our budget that we need to cut teachers.
No.
No.
Oh, I understand, they could come back and suggest cutting our budget. Those are two different things, as far as I'm concerned. We're not suggesting in any form or fashion, that I've heard so far from the administration, that we can afford to cut back teachers. So if that's the case, it wouldn't be cutting back teachers issue, it'd be cutting back a budget issue. Right, at least that's the way I'm trying to look at it. Because obviously, if we think we can cut teachers, then we might as well just send everybody home. You know, because we're not going to have enough, we're not going to have enough people to teach people. So, so, okay. Just want to make sure, if they cut our budget, they cut our budget, and then we have to figure out what we're going to do about it. But right now, you assume that we have, we don't have an overload of teachers. I think that's
I agree with what you're saying.
I think that's true. I think we don't have an overload of teachers. We have adequate amount of teachers.
We don't have extra teachers hanging around doing nothing.
Right, right, so therefore, the decision would still be for us not to cut teachers.
Correct.
So I would make a resolution, we accept the superintendent's recommendation, a motion, I meant, I'm sorry, thank you, a motion. Will I have glasses? Move to approve the superintendent's recommendation, recommending a level of participation in the Open Choice Program for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Jeff, and a second by Fred. Any other questions, conversation, discussion? Okay, with that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next up, policy review revision, first reading transportation policy. Tim, I want to let you
Let me take this one?
You got it.
Well, it's just a fantastic policy. The edits were fun to go through, if you haven't had the chance yet, there's four colors, I think, and some are single-striker, some are double-striker, so you really got to pay attention while you're reading it. But it did certainly address a lot of the deficiencies and the holes in the transportation policy that we had, as it related to making, you know, ideally, using sound judgment, I think, to analyze any transportation. Kind of where we're at.
Thank you.
If anybody has any questions, I guess you can run it through myself or through Brian. But it seemed, I think, everything that we had looked at, we were good.
It's first reading, so, second reading will take place in our next board meeting.
Come back later.
Before we move to Agenda Item Number Eight, I just want to let folks know that we, the Board of Education is to present, I believe, Tuesday to the Board of Finance. Carrie and I are available for that presentation, so what I would recommend, what I'm hoping for here, is that the Chair of the ERC and the Chair of the Communications Committees present the budget to the Board of Finance. You guys good with that? Too late.
Sure, that's fine.
That's eight days from it?
A week from Tuesday. Not tomorrow night.
Generally, it'd be the presentation that you
It's essentially the presentation that we've already done.
Right.
There are a couple of slides I talked to Brian about that may get added. They really speak to enrollment decline, along with our teacher decline. If you look at those over time, they pretty much go hand in hand. So it's just, just an illustration of that. That is a recommendation that came from Mr. Richards on the Finance Board, one way to show that in a pictorial point of view. But otherwise, I think that the presentation that we've already put up there really tells the story that we want to tell and defend. So that's what I would go for there. So with that said
Jake and I will add some sparkly stars to it. Set six o'clock here.
I'm completely confident that you will do a fine job. I believe that it will be here, the time, I think it's
I think it's seven.
I think it's seven o'clock. So, item number
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Item number eight is, we have an executive session to discuss personnel matters. I will entertain a motion.
Who we need?
I think just Brian.
Okay. Move to go into executive session and invite the superintendent to discuss the personnel matter.
Motion by Tim. Second by Carrie. All in favor? Carrie's nine zero, we are in executive session.